Mr. President.
Okay, Joe.
Union County Board of Supervisors made an I have two minutes here in recess meeting on the nineteenth day of March twenty twenty nine o'clock A M. in the boardroom at Union County Courthouse. The adjutant, Mr. President of the meeting, including the following: Lieutenant Harris, President George Jackson, Vice President of the Board, George Dunn, Charles Mose, and Charles Galloway. In a Harris voice prayer, George Page, Director of the Board, Jason Magill, Board Attorney, State County Administrator, also present. Minutes from March the second twenty twenty to read the corrections. Charles Mose made a motion, George Dunn made a voice the second motion, except for March twenty twenty minutes as correction motion, period unanimously. George Dunn made a motion, Jackie Johnson voice the second motion, declare one nineteen ninety-eight Western Star, asset number three forty, twenty-nine sixty-eight, and the two thousand one Walton Fuller, asset number one twelve six seventy-six, surplus property, and Big Two, one fifty-two eighteen fifty-six steel bil roller, sell the vehicle auction, and jump ice maker, one-one-two-six-nine-nine, Air Presser twenty-fourty, Tyler, one-eight, Chris Walker, and two forty-five, open tolls, total auction, with the month of December twenty twenty, right, or before, right, three decision, clear service, and sell these items as scrap metal, motion period unanimously. Charles Mose made a motion, George Dunn made a voice second motion to point Paul Hampton as proceeding, Director of the Landfield, motion period unanimously. Note, capital meetings for the East Central Phantom and Gulf District have been canceled. Pat Harrison project on Perk Creek on San Springs Road has been approved to approve drainage along the silver road, debt up to fifty percent of cost being paid with Pat Harrison Waterway, not fifty-six twenty-five thousand. The LSVP fifty-one fourteen Mclellan Road Bridge and Big Three has been revised, with the entire project paid with LSVP money. Original project called the county to contribute sixty-nine thousand one hundred dollars. The Farm Bureau hosting the board for fish fry, and Legion Hook made twenty firsts twenty twenty. The board was made aware of governor's executive order concerning measures to fight COVID- nineteen. Rick Harrison gave update on Union County Archives, sent it open house, set for April seventeenth. Page two, noted broad disservice massive. Insurance representative gave update on Union County liability insurance and by board, the increase in premiums for the calendar year, the rate is a hundred and forty-nine thousand nine hundred ninety-eight dollars for twenty twenty, and an increase from a hundred and thirty-four thousand. George Alexander made a motion, Charles Galloway voiced second motion to Union County liability insurance massive, motion period unanimously. The board also included to add uninsured motorship cost permits, board rejected as the premium was too high. Brian Taylor and Robin Richardson met with board, discussed maintenance agreements between the departments and board supervisors. Mr. Taylor also discussed adding a voluntary one dollar water bills for building and fire departments. Robin Richardson also gave an update of COVID- nineteen pandemic. The vendor, Union County Tax Assessor, met with board and gave an update on solid waste collections. This vendor advised board that collections were progressing and minor changes might be necessary for collection of people. Other, Joe Pinks and Sheriff of Union County met with board, gave update on COVID- nineteen, cost mistaken in Union County jail. Charles Galloway made a motion, Jackie Johnson voiced second motion to approve ER BR supplemental agreements presented by county engineer. Changes were nine hundred dollars plus eighty-three hundred for piling over, motion period unanimously. George Dunn made a motion, Charles Galloway voiced the second motion to fight for Pat Harrison Waterway assistance on Union Buffalo Road Bridge project, motion period unanimously. Two bids received for construction work on Pat Harrison project on Pine Look Road, one bid was for David's call construction, their bid was forty-three thousand five hundred twenty-seven dollars. Second bid was for Pritch construction, and their bid was forty thousand eight hundred dollars. Kenneth Harris made a motion, George Dunn voiced second motion to accept Pritch construction bid of forty thousand eight hundred dollars as the lowest bid, motion period unanimously. Page three. Charles Mose made a motion, George Dunn voiced the second motion to authorize state to pay entire contract on Mclellan Road Bridge out of LSVP clinical project, number LSVP fifty-one fourteen, motion period unanimously. Another, D four employees entered private property of Bobby Carr, Chris Compton, Rodney Walton, and Lane Crawley during recent storm, motion period unanimously. Jack Johnson jumped a steel blower that was removed, beaten one very dead, forced on McKenyon Parkville, Henry McRoe, best statement included in his minutes. George Alexander made a motion, Kenneth Harris voiced the second motion to authorize supervisors to spend up to fifty thousand to purchase equipment from other counties or municipalities of the vehicle auction, motion period unanimously. The board will discuss declaration of surplus property from seized property when a judge's order to receive, declaring seized property as property of Union County. Other, no bids will receive for surplus bridge roads from Big Two. Jackie Johnson made a motion to close the meeting, see if executive session was necessary on economic development and personnel. Jackie Johnson made a motion, George Alexander voiced the second motion to enter into executive session on economic development and personnel, motion period unanimously. President of the meeting, put the board, Board Attorney, County Administrator, Chancellor Clark. George Alexander made a motion, Charles Mose voiced second motion to come out of executive session with no action taken, motion period unanimously. State of emergency declared for Union County, Charles Mose made a motion, Kenneth Harris voiced the second motion to declare a state of emergency due to COVID- nineteen pandemic, motion period unanimously. George Alexander made a motion, Charles Mose voiced second motion to issue five million general obligation road bonds to be paid for by U.S. tax with no millage increase, motion period unanimously. Page four, George Alexander made a motion, Charles Galloway voiced second motion to adjourn until April sixth twenty twenty two o'clock A M., motion period unanimously. This other one is so quick, this one we will get reared on March twenty-fourth. Union County Board of Supervisors made a special panel meeting in their boardroom at Union County Courthouse on the twenty-fourth day of March at one o'clock B M. Union County people was advised at the meeting, and they had a representative present. Present for the meeting included Kenneth Harris, President of the Board, Jackie Johnson, Vice President, George Alexander, Charles Mose, Charles Galloway, George Page, Chancellor Clark, Jason Magill, Board Attorney, were also present. Charles Galloway voiced prayer, written by editor for Union County People was also present. Purpose of the meeting was to address the county's situation concerning COVID- nineteen virus. The tax assessor, circuit clerk, now one manager, as well as emergency management director and county attorney were also present. Board Attorney Jason Magill read a prepared resolution concerning the COVID- nineteen pandemic and asked board to adopt the same. Charles Mose made a motion, George Alexander voiced second motion to adopt the COVID- nineteen resolution as prepared and recommended by the Board Attorney, motion period unanimously. Charles Mose made a motion, George Alexander voiced second motion to adjourn until April sixth[449.44]
That you can pledge the infrastructure money to, um, to issue bonds. And to the extent that money is pledged for bonds, then they, you know, you can do it up to ten years, okay? Uh, so if that money get, if that gets in that deal, which is not certain that yet, then it's gonna be mighty hard for the legislature to take that money away. While you got a bunch of bond issues that pledge that money, okay? But we just don't know.
You, you said ten years.
Ten years, yes, ten years.
Still a lot of them though.
Yeah.
Okay, the other bill says two bills in there.
Well, the other bill is just, uh, it's the, uh, the claimer bill that the senate wanted to do. Initially, the, the, the bill was being revised so that you could use it for drainage projects mainly. And, um, and, but they put a couple of other provisions. This is, and we came out of town, time rentals put it in there from town ass county about the ten years and stuff. And we, I talked to him, gosh, I guess a month ago now about it. And his concern was really small towns getting in over their heads. That's why, that's why I put it in there. But it's my understanding it's not in the senate bill.
Any more questions?
If all the wheels keep turning and everything, it's okay and it's done deal. How long do you think it takes before we say?
Uh, it takes sixty to ninety days. And that's, I would probably err at this point more towards the ninety days. Central because, you know, I think we're moving ahead. We gotta get these validated and the, the call and, you know, state bond attorney. We gotta make sure the courts are, are gonna make, cause validation usually takes about three weeks. But typically sixty to ninety days. And, you know, we're doing some right now that I haven't seen any reason to think that that's changing. Everybody seems to be working, uh, working from home or wherever. It seems to be working. We're using the internet an awful lot. But, uh, I think sixty to ninety days is still probably correct. But I air towards the ninety days, just in case.
So do you want to end having a question for the gentleman? Not, appreciate you.
Thank y'all so much. Thank y'all.
Y'all calling us to do this way?
Sure. They've got our detailed motion of intent. So they gotta report the vote. In fact, we got to.
You got it?
All in favor?
Is this the engagement resolution?
Yes, no, we just, they can't, anybody else.
Then there's the engagement resolution.
This is not saying that we have to go with you all, but it's going on.
Right, if, look, if y'all decide not to do it tomorrow, I mean, it doesn't cost you dying.
They had it tomorrow coming.
See what I'm saying?
Hey, he may work for a long, but I never would.
Y'all just used to dealing him.
We knew he'd do that.
This is the one that the guy kept doing that.
Yeah.
Same thing for letter engagement.
We got a motion for a letter engagement.
So move. Right?
All in favor?
All right.
Thank you. I'll get that later, thanks. I'm social at this, so good to know.
Red wave delay.
Risk me?
Yeah, I'm there.
Five minutes.
Five minutes?
Five minutes and five feet.
Go on, brother.
Five feet. There you go. Well, uh.
I'm all right.
How y'all? Uh, we got two and a half million dollars sitting in state aid. All right.
That can be used?
That can be used, that can be taken.
I mean, what kind of to use?
All right.
This is part we won't let.
You can use forty percent for rescinding roads. All right? So what do you see? I got four programs written up to, to program the money for something. See, the money's just sitting there right now. It's in a bucket, it's wide open, it's a staple or two, they can take it. Which they, we don't want that to happen. So I made a full program, which all it does is program it, it appropriates the money for some bridges and roads. I broke it up best I could so that everybody's got a piece. So I know some need bridges, some need roads. So I broke it up as even as I could and wrote these programs up. They can be modified later on when things get back to halfway normal. But right now, it's just sitting there, it ain't programmed for nothing. It would be very easy for the state to get. So these programs I wrote up best I could, but they could be modified later on. In other words, it's not set in stone.
What was it for?
All right, I got forty percent broke down into roads. I got two projects with bridges. All right, Mr. Jackie. All right, there you go. It's the Hickory Fellowship Bridge. Got it on a program, project all by itself. All right? The LSVP, so you're the only, y'all two, the only ones that's got LSVP eligible bridges. So Mr. Goblin, I put them two bridges on pine reeds. I put those together. We don't have enough money for the whole project, but you know, they've been confiscating money? And they've been promising, they promised, it's always ours, you know? You don't know what's gonna happen. On pine reeds, this two bridges comes to about six hundred thousand dollars. Yep. Now, we don't have six hundred thousand, we've only got about two hundred and something thousand. But they've been saying, they've been telling me all along that whatever we don't have in LSVP funds, they will give us those confiscated, uh, rescind, they call it rescinded funds. So we'll get about four hundred thousand dollars rescinded funds if everything the state is on is carrying. So I programmed those two bridges, cause he's got a bridge, like Hickory Fellowship, about four hundred and something thousand. So I programmed that bridge into SAP funds. SAP, that's the bucket of SAP money. These are LSVP bridges, comes out, that's a different bucket. Comes out of LSVP funds.
A two and a half million that you're talking about, does that include the SAP?
That includes SAP. Including the LSVP, two and a half million. So.
But you're, you're setting up where Jack and I would get bridges and the other bridges.
And the other three would get roads. Now, but that's just to get this money tied up. I mean, we can, y'all can lay it on, you can, whatever, you can swap or trade or add or, it can be changed.
Joe got a question for you?
Oh, well, I'd ask a question. You, Charles, you and Jackie and, and Charles, I think I'm right, someone's got bridges leaving a pipe.
That's right.
For the bridge part of it.
That's right.
Kenny and myself don't have any bridges.
No, like I got a bridge that's qualified on it.
You ain't got state aid?
No, but it's SAP. Might gonna be one, SAP.
That's right.
Well, it qualifies on it.
Huh?
It qualifies on it, on the state aid.
The pine ridge or, or city project, city land.
Yeah, you didn't have, you didn't have that. But, uh.
Yeah, I hear. But if we have to use sixty percent for bridges, that's just what it is.
Yeah.
I mean, that's.
I'll swap the road money to bridge, like we do that and get it tied up.
Yeah, we just, we just gotta get this money tied up right now. We can change it later on, but you know, we, there's been so much going on, y'all ain't really had time to sit down. And it might, and this might, they, they run into skeleton crew, the state agents, they might not even be able to approve, to tax four or five signatures, so they might not be able to approve this anyway.
But we do our part, they won't, should be.
That's right, at least if they come to give the money, at least they can show where we tried, you know, we got a program in the works.
Are you tying up a million for, for ceiling, is that what you're doing? Is that one of your, is that forty percent?
Well, no, can't take forty percent of LSVP, forty percent of SAP, which is two hundred, I mean, two million. It's about eight or nine hundred thousand maybe. Yeah, roughly. So that's going, putting that into roads.
So eight hundred thousand is gonna build a ceiling.
Roads, ceiling and striping or, or, you know, however, y'all.
So that leaves one seven, million seven, all right, for the two bridges, is that, or the three bridges, is that what you're saying?
Well, I don't, I break it out into LSVP and SAP because the LSVP doesn't have a, really a lid on it because they told us we apply with the money we got, which is about two hundred thousand. And they'll add to it, you know, five, six, seven.
You're still gonna need another bridge, if you don't have seven hundred thousand, if you do the sixty four Ls, you need to add another bridge. You gotta do the sixty forty split, about how, those three bridges you're looking at big. So you still have seven hundred thousand, if you build another bridge, or maybe even two bridges.
Right.
So if you want, well, one of their sixty forty splits was given.
Right.
So we need to pick up two more bridges to get the sixty percent covered.
I don't know, how, how, hey, you said you got four plans there, how do you got to tie up the two and a half million dollars?
All right. The LSVP is, is totally separate now.
But it's included in the dollar amount?
In the total dollar amount. It is, but it's a separate bucket, it's a bucket all of its own, so. See, like.
So how much, how much is that?
I got, right at, it's six ninety-nine, it's almost seven hundred thousand.
Of LSVP?
Of LSVP, of which we've only got two hundred thousand. So if we be counting on the state to give us five hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, you've given, I don't think you asked the court house a question.
Why am I not having?
He's not talking about the bridge cost, how much money is in the pot, is what you meant when?
I want two and a half million dollars. What are you saying is LSVP money?
We've only got, we've only got two hundred thousand LSVP.
So now we got two million, three hundred of them.
Well, just think, don't, don't combine the bucks, I, I probably messed up. Just think LSVP is its own bucket of money, that's all. It don't include none of that other. LSVP funds just comes out of one bucket. We've got two hundred thousand in. State's gonna give us five hundred thousand if they did what they're saying.
Yeah, right, how much have we got in state aid? Now, I did LSVP, how much have we got in state aid?
State aid, you got right at two million dollars.
Okay, two million dollars. If the state is gonna give him the five hundred thousand, his bridges don't even count in the two bills.
That's right.
Okay, you ain't using, you ain't using but four hundred thousand on one bridge in Big Five. You've got to use another seven hundred thousand on bridges.
You got two in Big Five.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, you got two.
I said it.
No. You've got two bridges in Big Five. Yeah, I forgot to tell you that. I didn't tell you.
All right, now we can.
You're right, you're right, I didn't.
What's the other one in Big Five?
Pleasant Ridge, the one you got closed.
All right, now wait a minute, do we really wanna tie that money up on that road?
I, I think we can do it.
I know we can do it.
All that, no, that would be better, but I'm still at, I'm waiting for.
All right, we need to name another bridge.
Budgeroo.
Charles, Charles, Charles got more.
Can't come out of that pot of money, can you?
Yeah. Budgie Road is LSVP.
It's not LSVP.
All right, so we need another bridge. And possibly two.
There's a bridge?
No, no.
Love to tie up all the money.
We need to make sure we're tying it up.
Well.
He's doing his figuring now, I guess you've done your figuring about how much, you've got the number here to fit the numbers that.
State aid can give us.
Okay. But what, what we're, what everybody else is looking at is the cost of, that the number you put on those bridges is not enough, they still got money left over.
No, that ain't the case. I got Hickory Fellowship and Pleasant Ridge on two different projects. Okay, two different projects that's coming out of SAP funds. We really don't have enough.
Those two bridges were total what?
Well. Uh, almost a million dollars.
You're gonna spend one point two.
Almost a million dollars, but we don't, we don't, I had to put some in county funds cause we don't really have enough SAP funds to build both bridges.
Oh my God.
Yeah.
Okay, if you put, if you get one point two million away, it has to go to bridge. And you've only up two a million, how do you not have enough money to build two bridges?
Well, it's not exactly two bridges, so I didn't bring off my numbers, wouldn't. Uh. Right at a million for them two bridges. I didn't bring off numbers, I added that.
Well, give us what you get in four programs, mind what costs they come out of that.
Okay. All right, first I took the Hickory Fellowship Road Bridge. That's a four hundred sixty-six thousand.
And that's LSVP?
That's SAP, that's SAP, right, SAP, SAP funds.
So that was, what was that total?
Four sixty-six. Four hundred sixty-six and seven fifty, yeah. No. Travel phone, I ain't sure how to operate. All right, and I took forty percent of, um, the two million, no, it's not really two million, it's actually a hundred, it's one point eight million, that's, that's probably worth it. It's one point eight million, I took forty percent of that, put on the road.
Forty percent of what is that?
Seven hundred. What happened to the two and a half million?
That's, add the two buckets together.
Yeah, we're gonna separate them back.
Can't add LSVP.
So wouldn't it be?
One point, we got one.
Two point three million if you took the LSVP in? You said add the two million.
No.
So that's one point.
All right, we hit one five, this better go on down for.
Yeah, just.
We got one point eight million of SAP funds. I keep saying two, it's almost two, it's one point eight something, something.
So we got seven hundred twenty thousand for roads, we know that's locked up.
That's right.
And four sixty-six on one bridge, now what else you got?
All right, then I add the other bridge, Pleasant Ridge, and it's about five hundred twenty-five thousand dollars.
That's already SAP.
And that's SAP money.
And that's the bridge we think we could repair and do though.
That's nine hundred ninety-one thousand dollars.
If you wanna do that, that's fine, but what I'm saying is we can change that. All I wanna do is get our money tied up.
That's what I thought, you got one more project there.
Right. We got three SAP projects.
With totals nine hundred, which totals.
Hickory Fellowship Pleasant Ridge and over the third floor, they were.
Slam over.
Road receding.
Okay, so that's, okay.
You got a road project, two bridge project, okay. On my numbers, I've got all the money tied up. Now, I can, I'll go back and check it.
That's one point seven one one million dollars, he's right, he's, he's, he is right, there, he's close enough.
Close enough.
And then we could change a bridge later from West Bridge to Charles Bridge.
You could change any of them.
And then your two bridges is gonna be LSVP.
Yeah, that's it. Now, and if y'all wanna change from road money to, I mean, we can change, we can modify these programs however you want.
You just need to get it secure.
I'm just trying to get it appropriated for something. Or to make it harder for the state to come in there and get it.
How many miles of, what, pre-level and seal are we gonna get?
If you did three beats, you get four and a half miles for beat. Which that, that ain't much, but that's all it is.
Twelve, thirteen and a half miles.
Thirteen and a half miles.
Or how much?
Seven hundred twenty-five.
Seven hundred, yeah. Now, that's striping and leveling and all that.
That's a good deal.
We can modify it.
Ain't no way, ain't no way.
We need a motion. To verify it's red.
Yeah, I wanna rush it, y'all, though. Well, I do.
Ain't nothing to it.
We need to tie the money up.
We need to tie it.
Mr. President, I make that motion, it'll leave.
That's our thing.
We'll get the second.
Hello?
All in favor? Open? What else you got for us to weigh?
Y'all got to sign all these papers. Sure. But it ain't this whole.
Pat Charles.
That's fifty-five thousand miles.
It's gonna come in less than that.
It's gonna be.
Right now, right now, everybody, that will.
Yeah.
Additional.
We have spider, mystery ceiling, like we did last time.
Striking.
Lock seal.
Oh, fog seal, I didn't.
That's unincluding in that one.
Yeah, I, I included fog seal.
Okay.
I did include fog seal. Go around this way.
I mean, yeah.
Like I say, that we could change it.
Won't be the first time.
No, I, I don't know any other, but college, I mean, better get that money tied up. Some, best way I could figure out.
Three of, I mean, you folks left.
Phone?
You got the four, I think that's the four on the next.
Did I sign all three of those?
Yeah, well, three I've signed, yeah.
I, I, I didn't go this way, but. But, uh, and thanks. I mean, God only knows, y'all always sign that.
Did I sign that?
I need to see more signs.
How many of them was it, signed five or four? Four total.
Got one right here, Joe.
And, uh. Mr. Clary, would it, I have handwritten these numbers, would it be all right if I take them and go and type them out, clean it up, and then get you a copy?
I wish you remember bringing their copy.
Until state approves it, well, I want you to have a copy, but until state approves it.
He wants you to have it.
Yeah, I want that.
Boy, that is your boy, though.
So we got two years to do projects.
Four years. This is spread out over four years.
Well, if you got the bridge and horse.
There's a private. Oh, I think we will, I just thought something about. Uh, I don't have a list. I just remembered something else. On the road projects, can y'all name, I probably need to put the name of the roads.
Well, did we give you a list of referred roads you need, please?
Yeah.
You, I did say.
You want me to pick one, or y'all, you wanna pick out the roads that you want?
You'll be able to change them too?
Yes, that can fix them. Yeah.
I'd like to see what, which recommend, and then make my own decision.
Uh.
So you got a copy of that?
I, I have got, I didn't.
I mean.
It's somewhere.
You gotta have it signed today? You may get in with that.
I, I need to get it in, you don't know right off the top of your head, the worst, worst road you got? I mean, I'll call you back later.
Four miles, throw it out to the end where.
Which road you got?
I got the Stratton Road.
How long is Stratton?
Well, it's a little over four.
That's just right, isn't it? All right. I'm gonna write that down.
I think mine would be a little rough with it.
Oh, I know it, yeah.
If he talks about it today, it's right.
All right, I'm gonna put that in. And you know who can, I hate to really blame anyone, but.
You gonna have to break, you know, this box meal, aren't you? Four miles and out, but clean up roads, not that way.
Right.
I mean, you know, that's just.
We can work that out, but if it's at least four and a half, then it'd fit the program, but you're still changing.
Great news is Jack, if it's not, then I'll go to the back.
Not signed.
Not signed?
The big center, the rest are marked with the practice.
Oh, really?
I'll be late.
How long was that road?
They're not as good as that, huh?
Not sure what I called you with the four days.
Well, I'd give it one of you, though.
Yes, I might.
Yeah.
Well, see, I got two, two.
Well, it's hard for them.
We got another road.
I'm signing.
And, um. Just give me another road.
That might be changed, but I know it'd be striking, that road was done.
I can look it up, I'd check it. I'll look it up.
Four days old, you concentrate on it. What, you looking at?
Yeah, that'll work. All right.
You already got your motions?
Got it.
Well, they gonna start working out here, you know, you heard them say.
They hung up, they shut down right now. But, uh, state aid is not giving us the go-ahead to go to work. I think state aid's holed up right now. They ain't, have been working from home, if they're working.
Highway fifteen, there a mill? Did you come on fifteen this morning?
They started grinding.
They were, they were putting out the market, not trying to.
They grinding, oh, we did that. I mean, I, I saw a truck and stopped.
Fixing a repaid, it, I thought was going all the way.
She got a pay.
Yeah.
They just got a flag, cause it's a case.
They're too doing, I, I don't, I don't know how to do a test with their door or not, but I figured if they're gonna.
They're on for repaid this year.
I didn't see.
Uh, the guy from Pat Harrison, he come and looked at it, he said, dude, we turned it, he put it in about this time.
You need to get it, I ain't gonna do it.
No, I'm gonna go back there, turn it back.
I'm gonna know. They all gonna get one, they say. Pay freeze.
Yeah, all right, I'll get you a copy when I put it.
Steve.
Give me a hard bit, man. See you, Steve, see you later. Yeah.
The Lincoln Justice Court funds for months, February twenty-first through March twentieth.
Three thousand seven hundred and eighty seven dollars and eighteen cents. American Municipal Service collected six thousand seven oh eight seventy five. Two hundred and three new cases opened during the period, funds in amount of fifty five thousand seven hundred and ninety three dollars levied. Three thousand eight hundred and forty four dollars and seventy five cents from the new cases collected.
Steve, and that's probably the most we've collected in any month in the last four years.
Don't talk about it.
What's up, what call this? How'd that happen?
That's hot. Let's call it, get that someplace.
Uh, East Mississippi Railtors sent us a letter. That's, uh, this includes Clark and Chauvin, Newton, Kemper, Lauderdale. Uh, they are asking you all to remember how important the Chancellor Clark's office is, and it needs to be open for business to continue as more.
Underline that twice.
We need to make a motion from our county or an institution?
No, it was just a letter encouraging you to stay open. Uh, wanted to let you know Masson Insurance owned the new pickup you bought and the dump truck. You paid two thousand five ninety eight seventy five for the pickup and fifteen thousand five oh one for the dump truck. They added the pickup at eighteen thousand and they added the dump truck at thirty nine thousand.
I guess you got a pretty good rate by.
I need a motion to approve a contract with Delta for the tax collector. This is to start online payments, they have a setup fee of four thousand seven fifty and then a monthly maintenance fee of four hundred and fifty dollars.
Is this on the solid waste or is this on?
This is, this is tags and real property and all of that.
So they can do it all online?
So move. Second. Second. On the table.
Uh, Constable Dottie Collins presented his twenty nineteen annual financial report as required by the state. George has a copy that can be in the, in the minutes. I need a motion to request Pat Harrison partner with us on the Bieber Control Project. Uh, we normally spend seventy five hundred dollars with USDA and about four thousand with soil and water conservation.
So move.
Hey, can I ask a question on that? You're saying so much for USDA and so much for soil and water. What's the difference?
Just different programs.
Different, one of them is for one of them, beaver tails and.
The other is the trapper through USDA.
For soil, I'm reading the last question, soil and water is under USDA.
It's a separate programs. The four thousand is for a beaver tail bounty and the seventy five hundred is for a trapper.
Yeah.
Is that right?
Yeah, be cats is the first one, the be cat program.
And this today you skipped it.
That was, I was rushing for you in some old minutes and I forgot to take that out. That's some old notes. Uh, DEQ grant on the second page there. County was approved for the non-competitive unauthorized dump site cleanup program, nineteen thousand one oh one. Funds have got to be used by December thirty first, twenty twenty two. I need a motion to accept the grant.
I got it.
So that's, well, okay. Go ahead, Jeff, you have a question. I was gonna, I was gonna say something on that deadline, since the Sheriff's Association has kept us from picking up trash. Are they gonna give us an extension on that December thirty one deadline or how would we go about that?
They've not said anything about it yet. If this, I'm sure if this extends on after, probably it will.
That's, uh, December twenty two now.
Two and a half years now.
Oh. I mean, I didn't see it in twenty twenty two.
Alright, I don't wanna, I figured we used it.
I, I always say, I, I missed that part, my bad.
Mississippi State University has asked that the board approve the closing of the extension office from April sixth to April twentieth. The staff will be teleworking from home, responding to calls and emails from clients, distributing information on COVID nineteen through emails and social media. And they'll be on standby to assist, uh, NEMA if called. I need a motion to approve the closing of the office from the sixth to the twentieth.
What on that call of the day, they were one of the essential offices?
Yep, but, uh. Uh, their boss wanted us to approve it since it was kind of ill, even though we really don't. We don't have a whole lot to do with that, that they have operations, but that's what they wanted us to do and offer them both.
They're, they're, they're working at home.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't want it, we're interested in it. But on the day, they could shut that down, I don't think nobody.
I make that motion.
Second.
On the table. Says she would put another, well, put another little fire out, contact with them. And I think they've seen them, they, uh. Changed it with. The all the calls from that office to their.
Yeah, she asked about that, I emailed her directions, how to do that, I told her yesterday. Uh, Three Rivers.
Go on that, on the table.
I thought we voted on that.
We did.
I know, I didn't vote.
Oh, you abstained? Okay.
Okay, Three Rivers.
You voted against it, you didn't abstain it. Either way, I just.
I made some pressure.
You abstained, it goes with us.
Yeah.
I voted against it. Nothing against them, I, I just, I'm afraid I made some pressure.
Great. Uh, Three Rivers Solid Waste Billing Tax Collectors Please with Three Rivers PDD Solid Waste Billing has asked, has asked the boards to approve contract with Three Rivers extending the service for an additional four years. Need a motion to approve that.
Why they need your four years, Dave?
That's what, that's just their term, that's what they do on all their contracts. I don't have, hadn't seen it.
I don't know. Haven't seen any improvement on the. Picture, you know, of solid waste bill being paid.
I don't know if it been added long enough to tell.
I don't know, I don't know how much. We just do.
I guess it's. We're capable of this, we can't.
They just gonna stay and sign price, that's what I don't know.
But she needs to do the contract.
Can you sign it?
Yes.
Does it say on the map we've been paying?
On the map, syrup, we've been paying.
I'm thinking it's like a nickel per billing, does that sound right?
Uh, something like that. If, if that's just on the solid waste bill, uh. We'd give, is, is May here?
Yeah, she's here.
Well, we, we, let's go back to that.
Okay. Uh, Tri-State Consulting. Need a motion to approve the mapping contract with Tri-State for a four-year period consisting or costing hundred and five thousand four hundred dollars broken down. Twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, the cost is twenty six thousand two hundred each year, twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four, the cost is twenty six thousand five hundred each year.
Is that Wes, man?
No, that's the Marshall Institute, great, they actually draw the changes and parcels on the map for us.
So move. Second. On the table.
B three has been given permission to remove five hundred cubic yards of dirt from the old dirt pit on that deal road to use. Build up on the road for log trucks, uh, for the Mississippi Van Choctaw Indian Timber Sales to cross recently installed culverts. State A Roads Construction Projects administered through OSARC will be given consideration when asked by the Board of Supervisors on behalf of the contractor. For any contractor electing to temporarily discontinue operations for employee shortages, supply chain shortages, or subcontractor shortages.
Can I explain that, Steve?
I'm thinking they're saying that if you contractor request additional time, they'll grant it based on what's going on right now. George, you got a copy of the letter, if you want him to read it.
We don't have anything that that really would apply to right now, anyway. It's great, okay.
That's all I've got.
Say.
All I've got is the void change, which I already figured. Danny Todd was quit deep by Melissa Bliss in the tax office. Uh, four thousand a year increase due to solid waste collections. Leaving brand solid waste in the tax office, solid seven thousand a year solid waste collection. Didn't come in seven thousand a year solid waste collection in tax office. Mike Bender, tax ass for solid waste collections, ten thousand a year. Joyce, timeless tax office, seven thousand a year for solid waste collection. Iowa Smith, three dollars and the annual increase, solid waste collection. Michael Shree, Indian sheriff's office, ready to pay eleven dollars part-time retirement on it.
Hey, May. Can you somebody talk to the board, uh, we have questions about the Three Rivers and solid waste story?
Good race. I call me. What is it gonna do? We lost.
I will look that up.
Let's wait for May. Want May is on the way? Let's take him. I'll go take the car.
Anybody calling her, the gold one?
I'm Cory Calliver.
Hey. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Well, this is up over here, getting a make. So, well, this is up over here, getting a make.
I had a liking this corner. I just feel comfortable here, I was put in the corner so many times during my, my childhood.
That's all big track timber now, got the roof closed. They want to get in there. So. Choctaw. It's on, they settled with the Choctaw track.
Twenty five loads. Half hundred gallons, about twenty.
We couldn't get twenty four hundred and eighteen dollars for the roof over there. I don't wanna pay half of it. So he's expecting it to cost fifty eight hundred dollars.
Who'd you get to look at?
The Masson Industrial.
I thought you contacted somebody.
No, I hadn't talked to her. No, 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 nothing, I expected to get it done. Probably thirty five hundred.
Just a rare with this way that they supposed to call.
Well. You know when that bill was accepted over there? November? He still ain't done it. I don't know what's going on. Actually, I think the board would have the rights re-advertised, but, uh. I don't think that, I would be complaining about their building, another one that I would be discussing that. What's up? Oh. So, um. We don't have any birds on Silver Star. I walked out of home and playing over.
I bet not to you, yes.
You saw one?
No. You know, we were down there yesterday, I think they were about four blocks. Old cross. Y'all down there, Jim, yeah?
Well, I, you know, I have a church till ten, nine thirty or so on the Facebook, I went yesterday morning. I started to cut over and walk the whole back out and I didn't work a crook out of nothing. I thought, well, maybe we'll walk back. You gotta get in the middle, hide.
Pretty big thing.
It's one combat, so it's not.
Set out where you can find. Oh, man.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, May.
If I got a question?
Oh, oh, no, no. That'll do it, I see what you're doing.
I guess the question was on this. We have a bird down on this one, you know, that motion we're gonna make with Three Rivers.
Yeah, on your contract.
Mm-hmm.
What, what's the dollar amount of that contract? Or did it have a dollar amount?
Yes, it changed from what you had before, other than.
It just renewed it?
Just renewed, it's all we do. The only thing changed, they may just ain't renewing it for four years instead of one.
Oh, so, so we've been doing it for one year.
Can you verify for us what that amount is?
I don't have it, didn't find out.
Oh, okay.
Everybody seems to know what pay incurred, that would be not.
I think Steve, right, I think it's like five or six cents.
I think I've got a copy of the old contract.
Same.
So we need a contract for them to sign?
For individual.
I think he's already signed it. Huh? I think he's already signed it.
Alright, it's gonna, they have to rip today, someone is, Joyce, come make the rip.
Oh, they did? I have six, and I play a week. George.
Tomorrow.
I can't remember how those have worked, but the guy is supposedly.
I don't think that ever turned out, do I? I think that, uh. Calling, he can talk to them, I think he had it, I think he just had. Signs, probably true, without them.
Oh, I got one, get checked.
They get the results back on them?
I have the one here.
I don't think they can test it.
I mean, Charles, they can test it all.
I'm not talking about.
I don't know, I don't know about.
On these, uh.
What we do?
Kind of like this. These tax exemptions. I'll make a motion to approve upon tax session recommendation.
Second. On the table.
I'll make hell, come on back, second.
Well, they, this is a question for me, it's not a situation on Steve. Everybody that works in the courthouse, where they checking everybody's temperature every morning, they coming to know what they're like to do. Everybody that works in a courthouse, well, they checking everybody's temperature every morning, coming to know what you're like to do.
Can I join house that we can put again?
Will you think to come out, vote and check?
They're both not being checked. I'm being serious about that, do we not need to see if we can get somebody here before this courthouse opens? Yeah, we need to, I mean. Because if you let have your staff in, because see, Steve didn't get people here before they get here. You gotta have your staff already inside the door. Dispatch here all the time, I mean, that's something we have to look out for. Yeah, we need to make sure that.
Uh, this old contract says fifty-nine and a half cents per active deal per quarter.
Read that news, man.
Fifty-nine and a half cents per deal, per active, per active account per quarter.
Okay. That would be, what, fifteen cents? Seventeen cents a month? Seventeen, seventeen cents a quarter. That'd be seventeen cents a quarter. Yeah. I know something around there. Hang on, I don't.
Seventeen, seventeen cents a month, since.
A month?
A month.
Fifty something cents a quarter.
Seventeen cents a month.
Yeah. I thought he said fifty-nine cents.
Fifty-nine cents per quarter.
Per quarter.
Per active deal.
Can we not do our own ability to save some of it? What would it count for your office to do to build? Well, that's what we work for, we want to do this. Get out on building. Because I was against, uh. Let them do it in the first place with that just then.
So how many bills?
About fifty-four hundred, used to be, I don't know what it is now. Kind of over that now, probably say right now, I mean.
I'm thinking around five thousand. At twelve thousand five hundred.
There you are.
Okay, easy. That's twelve thousand five hundred a quarter?
Yes. I mean.
Fifty thousand dollars a year?
One two three, seven, eight, four, five.
That includes postage?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Take the auto bill. Used to, we get it down there.
We can be sending out twenty thousand cards a year.
Pretty much. Fifty-five cents. That's, that's, that's twelve thousand, what'd you get?
Thirty-three hundred dollars a quarter.
Yeah. Well, I'm building in my head, that was the problem. Okay. I fixed it with a dollar, it wouldn't be five thousand. It ain't actually causing us a four-ten quarter, it's postage, it's fifty-five, right?
No, postcard.
What is it on? Third round.
Nineteen, nineteen, I can't go see. It's, it's not the same thing.
Postcard.
It's different.
Alright.
Then you do the boat, which makes the breaks down a little bit further.
No Indian men is how much we paying there, so we'll have it. George, please.
Alright, fifty-nine and a half cents a quarter.
But we work it.
Which, I mean, that first bill, the first quarter, it, it should be that amount, but for those that pay by the year. They shouldn't get billed again when the first move to them billed. They're still sending a bill on to the people that pay a year, but I think that was changed. That's, uh, I mean, they're getting paid.
And that's kind of what we're for, though.
Okay.
Stay.
And another day.
But to do that, then we may want to take it back in at some point, because we have a better handle, who paid, who had who offered the bill. They can profit that. And they cut out on.
Stamped from each other. Then, another part of. Part of this is return addresses. When you get mail back and nobody go out and check them, the room stays on being those folks, you stay on painting it. But we don't do that anymore, we should do that. We're gonna fix part of that in a minute.
Somebody's gonna have to check it.
We'll do that.
But not, like I said, that's all in that contract, on what Steve told me, they're going to a four-year contract still.
Which is same thing. So, now we need a motion to approve that contract.
That's the same you got.
That's, that's all, May, we'll call you when, when we get this contract thing worked out.
Alright.
So we're gonna motion that, motion to meet to, to go and discover this. Nobody else out there, May?
No.